And that'll be for each case, not under public comments. Like somebody could come and make a public comment anytime. But we don't really have a time. Speaker Card would be more for some years. I would say that plus a factual is more character. I thought you already been told. You've already been told. Hit the growth. That's the beginning of the plot. What when the Mad's projection is built in. Is the growth. And he needs to know what percent of it is over 25%. Okay, let me ask you this. Okay, let me ask you this. I get your point. So. Oh, second motion.
All right, I believe at seven o'clock, you'd like to call this meeting in order. We have two new members to our planning commission. The furthest down from me is Patrick Bray. Welcome.
Thank you.
And next to him is Randy Barnes.
Just two.
So, welcome to the commission. First thing, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their father, George Washington. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, I believe everybody's in attendance with the exception of Commissioner Short. Item number four, the minutes to the last meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Or do you have any changes? Have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor of approving last month's minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five, public comments. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak about a non-agenda item this evening? Seeing none. If anybody does wish to speak about an agenda item, they could fill out a speaker card. And when you approach the podium, please give your name and address. Item number six, disclosure of ex parte communications.
Aye.
You guys know what that means? Seeing none. Item number seven, old business, no old business. Item number eight, moving right along. A public hearing to consider a request to rezone from the planned area development, PAD zoning district, to the light industrial park. Zoning district with pad overlay for the proposed. Is this the right? This is the meeting minutes, sorry.
Minutes.
I was on the wrong one. I got a new agenda and I'm confused. All right, I didn't think that was right. There we go. Item 12 dash 500 dash 0000, preliminary plat for Estrella parcel 7.5. Planning and zoning commission recommend to the city council approval of the preliminary plat for Estrella parcel 7.5 subdividing 17.93 acres into single-family lots and 11 tracts located at the southwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Calistoga Drive with the Estrella Mountain Ranch villages seven and nine. Plan area development subject to stipulations. And I'll open up for public hearing. Steve?
Thank you, Chairman, Commission members.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Planted plat for parcel 7.5. As just mentioned, it is at the southwest corner of Calistoga and Estrella Parkway. Generally, it's located within an area of residential development, existing residential development to the north, to the south. It's almost 18 acres, 17.93 acres. Proposal is for 71 single-family lots, densities 3.96 dwelling units per acre. Typical lot in this subdivision will be 47 feet wide by 105 feet deep. Proposals for a little over five acres of open space, 28% of the subdivision is open space. Tat Lot Ramada will be located. That general area there, and that's the layout of the subdivision. Two points of access onto Calistoga here and here. And with that, we do find the platter plat is consistent with our subdivision regulations with the PAD for this section of Estrella. We are recommending approval subject to the stipulations in the staff report. Mr. Chairman, our staff and applicant are available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff at this point? I had a couple of questions. Nobody else? Item number two, says basically adequate, they have to prove adequate potable water resources. There's no water supply issues in that area, is there? That's just a standard stipulation?
It is a, well, it is for these plots coming through.
But there's no water issues, they've got plenty of potable water down there?
Chairman, Commission members, the city has worked out an agreement, that's that Northern Solutions Water Facilities Agreement with the developer. I do not know particulars of that agreement, but that was to make sure that these subdivisions, as they develop, they had water resources.
Okay, all right. I thought that was the case, I just wanted to, was curious about that. The second thing I had has to do with stipulation number seven about the notifying, they have to put up a post, a sign about Luke Air Force Base. And then further back in the staff report, it says that basically the Air Force Base has no impact down there. I was just curious what the rationale is behind having that stipulation there?
Mr. Chairman, you're correct. In the staff report, it does state the base should not have any impact with noise on these homes, but it's been just a standard policy that for every model home complex, that is something that Luke has asked us to do to notify residents. And we just asked them to put a map in the sales office, just so buyers are aware that there is the base located, where it's at and where their home is at, so they can see.
Sure. Yeah, I don't have a problem with stipulation, I was just curious, it just seemed redundant. But if the base is asked for it, then that's fine. I had one more, but would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the.
Pete Tyke, 5090 North Fortyth Street, Suite 210. Just wanted to thank you for entertaining this and to answer your one question. Yes, that stip is on every plat we do. I think if we had a geyser coming out the middle of our property, they would still require that stip.
Okay. You don't have a problem with any of the other stipulations?
No, no, it's been there for years.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Any questions of the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else from staff? Right, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion on this application? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make, I move that we approve case number 12 dash 500 dash 00007, the preliminary plat for Estrella parcel with stated stipulations.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have, I think he was first. I have a second from Commissioner Peters. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to the next item down in Estrella. Preliminary plat for Estrella parcel 9.1. Planning and zoning commission recommend to the city council approval of the preliminary plat for Estrella parcel 9.1 subdividing 22.91 acres into 92 single-family lots and 11 tracts located approximately 800 feet north of the northwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Willis Road within the Montecito Phase III planned area development, subject to stipulations. With that, Steve?
Yes, sir. Another plat for Estrella, this one a little further south. It's located about maybe 800 feet north of the intersection of Estrella Parkway and Willis Road, north of the Cantomea Development. This one is about, this one's about 22.91 acres, 92 single-family lots are proposed here, a little larger, 52 by 104 deep, densities four dwelling units per acre. This subdivision will have 6.4 acres of open space. And the amenities of Tat Lot Ramada are located in that general area there. Access points will be here and here. That southern access point is proposed at a later date, so the developer was proposing an emergency access point there, north of that retention basin in the short term, and that was reviewed and approved by city engineering and the fire department. They are acceptable of that solution there. With that, we do find the subdivision does meet our subdivision regulations, Estrella design guidelines, we are recommending approval subject to the stip's in the staff report. With that, Chairman, available for any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff from the commission? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to speak on this item? Probably don't have to. Does he wish to speak? No, sir? All right, thank you. Further from the commission, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move case number 12 500 00008.
I have a motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Hamilton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Steve. All right, moving right along. Item 13 dash 5006, use permit to allow a car wash at 8:40 North Estrella Parkway in the Parkway Village Commercial Center. Planning and zoning commission recommend to approve the council, city council approval of a request for a use permit to allow a car wash, three-minute express car wash at 8:40 North Estrella Parkway in the Parkway Village Commercial Center with a deviation from the Parkway Village Comprehensive Sign Package to allow certain signs on the screen wall subject to stipulations. That all open up in public hearing? Welcome back, Brett.
Thank you, Chairman Slosser, members of the commission, members of the public. This is a request for approval of a use permit, as Chairman mentioned, to allow a car wash use on a one-acre parcel that's shown here on this aerial photo exhibit, and also a slight deviation from the Parkway Village Comprehensive Sign Package. And first, just wanted to make you aware of the surrounding area. To the north of the subject property, there is an existing building, but it's a vacant building that was intended for a bank. To the south is the Sherwin-Williams Paint Store Building. There are two vacant spaces in that building, and the Sherwin-Williams Paint Store takes up the rest. To the east, we have Estrella Parkway and vacant land in the Estrella Commons Planned Area Development. And then to the west is the Comfort Suites Hotel. We're here tonight because a car wash is a use permit in the general commercial zoning district, and the subject, this subject property is also in the city center gateway overlay district. And the overlay district was designed to connect the planned regional center, north of McDowell Road, to the planned city center development, and really serve as a primary gateway into that part of the city, into the central part of the city of Goodyear. And so, the overlay district was really designed to create a unique streetscape and identity for the community. It was intended that everything within the district would be high-quality architecture, well-planned, and have a distinct character. And so now I want to move on to the conceptual site plan. These, one of the provisions of the city center gateway overlay district, it does prohibit car washes from being within 75 feet of Estrella Parkway, so you can see this building is set back 75 feet. Additionally, car washes are not allowed to be substantially visible from Estrella Parkway. And it's a little difficult to see, but the applicant has put in a decorative screen wall they're showing adjacent to Estrella Parkway. The covered parking and drive areas are proposed to be screened by this, the screen wall, which is three and a half to six feet in height. And I'm going to move to the building elevation exhibit. So just real quickly on the building elevations in the screen wall exhibit that you see here, the building materials and colors that are proposed do follow the Parkway Village Master Plan Design Guidelines for that center. And the design elements that they're utilizing, the materials, the colors, do correspond to the adjacent developments, particularly the Comfort Suites Hotel. Also, in regards to signage, the applicant is requesting that the northeast and southeast portions of the screen wall contain wall-mounted signage displaying the name of the business. And staff is considering this request because the screen walls are a useful screening feature for this use. The decorative screen wall in front of the car wash will assist in screening the pay stations and the car wash canopies from public view. And so staff has determined that the deviation from the sign package is reasonable if the two wall signs mounted to the screen wall are permitted in lieu of signs that would be on the building in those locations. So we added a stipulation that says the screen wall signs are limited to the name of the car wash business, and the sign area shall be limited to 32 square feet, and the letter height limited to 32 inches. Okay, the business operating hours are proposed to be 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. This facility will be managed by up to three employees, and I'll defer to the applicant, who will talk a little bit more about the daily operations. We did have a citizen review meeting on April 2nd. During the meeting, two representatives of the Sherwin-Williams building did attend, and they expressed some concern about the car wash use in general. They wanted, I guess their main concern was they wanted a use that would have a lot of traffic in front of their business. And so during the meeting, the applicant discussed potential benefits of having this use, and talked about estimated vehicles that would be driving in front of their building that they are intending to continue to lease. And also, subsequent to the citizen review meeting, the applicant reached out to the property owner again, had a phone conference with the owner to talk more about the use and answer the, any questions that they had. So in conclusion, staff finds that the car wash is generally compatible with the existing land uses within the Parkway Village Commercial Center. The proposed use is surrounded by other properties that are zoned and developed for commercial and retail uses, and the conceptual site plan, it provides for adequate vehicular and pedestrian access for the proposed use. So staff is recommending approval subject to stipulations in the staff report. And that concludes staff's presentation. And staff can stand for questions, also the applicant would like to speak for a few minutes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
I do.
Helen?
Hi, Brett. What was, let me put it this way, how did Sherwin-Williams feel at the end of the meeting?
I would defer that question to the applicant because the applicant had direct conversations with the owner. There were two representatives of the owner at the citizen review meeting, so I would, I would ask Jim, would you field that question?
And I have another one. And since the Comfort Suites is so nearby, you heard nothing from them?
I will defer that one to the owner as well. The staff has not heard anything from Comfort Suites, correct?
And there was no other opposition from any nearby residents or anything?
No.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Brett some questions?
Yes.
Brett, can you, I went over there today and I looked at, I drove all around this. It seemed awfully small to me, this lot. Can you explain to me how the vehicles would be keying up to go in there in the entrance? How that would work?
It's on about an acre, isn't it?
That's correct, it is an acre, an acre lot. The applicant wanted to explain how a vehicle runs through the system, so I would, I would ask that the applicant can make a brief presentation, they'll walk you through the business operations, talk about when they would vacuum, where the machines are, and the typical use of a customer going through the car wash tunnel.
I'm talking about keying up to get in, into the, you know, along the roadways to get into the business altogether.
Okay.
How is that going to work?
There's a driveway, an existing driveway right here off of Estrella Parkway.
Mm-hmm, right.
There are also additional, I'm going to put up here for a second. Once you get into the Parkway Village Center, you can also access it from southbound in the Parkway Village Commercial Center. Also, in this adjacent Canyon Trails Town Center, you can access it traveling northbound through that center on commercial driveways. So I think the main entrance would be off the existing driveway, off of Estrella Parkway, vehicles would come through here, they would come around into this, the vacuum area. They would, they would either go ahead and have their vehicles vacuumed at that time, or they could proceed to the pay station to pay for a car wash. They would then proceed around and through the tunnel. And then once they get through, they can either leave, or they can continue back into the vacuum area.
So they would either be keying up on this entrance road off of Estrella Parkway, or they'd be keying up behind Sherwin-Williams to get into the business, is that correct?
They could also come from the north in the Parkway Village, north of this area here, they could be coming down this driveway.
You're not worried about any congestion in there as they're in line waiting to get in there, as far as the other businesses, is it Comfort Ence or the other businesses in the area?
Chairman Slosser, members of the commission, they have submitted a site plan, and our engineering, our civil engineering division has reviewed the site plan and looked at traffic circulation, and it does meet the city's design standards.
Anything else right now? All right, the applicant like to speak at this time? Welcome this evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name's Carl Gashler, 14435 West Coral Lane, Goodyear. Just to introduce myself, I'm the original developer of Parkway Village, bought the property and have developed it in 2004, and have owned that lot since 2004. I am a co-owner, also of Three Minute Express Car Wash with Dwayne Hager, who's here this evening with us. And we are both residents of Goodyear and are very interested in and have put a lot of value on making this a beautiful, good-looking, high-end car wash, because we live here in the community. So we're personally interested in that. What I want to do is just take two minutes or less to go over a couple of things, the, kind of the customer flow pattern and answer your questions of how our customer goes through the site, and then talk about some of the architectural highlights that were put into this. So to specifically answer your question, the way the customers are going to come in, as Brett indicated, they'll come in through this area, and then come in the main entrance here, and then queue up, and go through the car wash, through the pay stations, and then through here. I think an important thing to point out is that this is not the type of car wash where you go and you drop your car off and you wait 30 minutes, and then you, at the, at the end of approximately 20 to 30 minutes, your car is done. You're in and out in about three minutes or less. Cars are entering that wash tunnel one every 20 seconds. So as far as cars queuing up and stacking problems, a lot of that has been solved just by the business model. That conveyorized car wash is moving the cars through very quickly, and that's why we're not going to have that traffic flow problem there. So as we can see, customers can come in and they can use the self-serve vacuums, go to the automated station, counterclockwise flow, go through the wash tunnel, and then exit on the western side the same way that they came in. An interesting feature of this is that a customer can either vacuum before, or they can vacuum after. It doesn't matter to us. We want to make it flexible for the customers, so they can, they can do that anytime that they want. We want to make it flexible for the customers, so they can do that anytime that they want. We will have two to three employees on the site at a time. That's all we need. So, it's not going to be the type of car wash where we have lots of employees milling about. And those two to three employees will be there simply for monitoring the car wash and for customer service purposes. Now, to talk about some of the architectural highlights, we've put a lot of extras into this to make this a very special location, such as, as Brett already indicated, the taller and really, it's a beautiful decorative screen wall that is here, here, and here. And it, as he indicated, it goes from three to six feet and is, some of the features on that are that it's going to have stacked stone, some architectural interesting features to make it really one of the most beautiful screen walls in all the city of Goodyear. Will also have stacked stone around the site on the building in various locations. And this design exceeds the Parkway Village Architectural Design Guideline requirements. As far as the colors, we wanted to make the colors match what we think is the best-looking facility on Parkway Village, which is the Comfort Suites Hotel. So, we're getting the colors to match the hotel. First of all, it matches the design guidelines and it also matches the hotel, which we think looks beautiful. This is not your typical car wash. We wanted to make this someplace that is a beautiful destination, someplace that we can be proud of. Dwayne and I live in Goodyear, our kids go to school in Goodyear, our friends are here, we drive by the site every day. We want it to be someplace that we can be proud of. We also want it to be someplace that the residents of the city of Goodyear can be proud of as well. We want to build a beautiful, clean, friendly, warm, and inviting destination, and I think that's what we're going to do here. Thank you very much. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant?
Yes. What happened after the meeting with Sherwin-Williams?
Thank you. I was not at that meeting and what I'd like to do is have our consultant, Jim Rafferty, he was part of that meeting, and he can answer very specifically that question. Jim, would you come up, please?
Good afternoon, Councilman. My name is Jim Rafferty. Address is 15813 West Mescal. I live in Surprise, Arizona. We actually ended up with three total meetings with representatives or ownership from the Sherwin-Williams Paint Store and the property there. First, during a board meeting of that development center. Second, during the city council or the citizen review meeting. And then, third, I had a follow-up phone call with the representative of the owner that manages the center there. Their primary concerns were that they didn't, number one, they didn't understand what the car wash was going to look like, how it was going to lay out, what model, business model it was going to be, and how it would affect their business. And more importantly, they were concerned about whether or not that would bring any traffic to their facility and benefit their business and make their business easy to, for them primarily as the property owners, to lease out the space. We never came to a conclusion with the meetings as, they never said they were in full support or not support of the project. It was mostly just an educational discussion where I explained the whole process, what it was like. They seemed to me, the demeanor changed considerably throughout the course of the discussions, but I didn't ask any follow-up, you know, do you now like the concept or do you approve of it? But the main point was, for them, that they were going to get a lot of traffic that was going to have visibility of their business. And as a commercial realtor myself, I understand the value of that and convey that to them, that they're going to really get, you know, several hundred people a day looking at their businesses, which they currently don't have. And in that development center, that development center is, has a lot of empty properties on it. So, overall, most of the owners that we spoke to throughout the rest of the development center were very excited about the prospect of a business there that would generate traffic and influence into the center. So, that's, unfortunately, didn't get a final conclusion, yes, we're in favor or no, we're not, but we were just, the city, Brett specifically, had asked me just to give them a direct phone call and education on what we plan to do.
Do you know if they were aware of the meeting tonight, Sherwin-Williams?
They were, yeah, yes.
Well, then, they did give you an answer. They didn't show up.
Well, they didn't show up here, yeah. So, any other questions for me or follow-up? Okay, thank you.
I think you asked my question before, was the hotel didn't have any concerns?
No concerns. And the important thing is to make sure that the hours of operation are compatible and it's seven in the morning till nine o'clock at night. And they're happy with that. One of the things that he alluded to is Parkway Village doesn't really have an anchor right now. And what you need with businesses is to have an anchor that generates traffic. And I think that this car wash is going to do that by bringing people onto Parkway Village. That traffic comes in and they see what the other businesses are and I think it's going to help everybody. And the other business owners on Parkway Villages that we've talked to are all in agreement on that, that it's really going to help out business-wise.
Anybody else? Well, I personally think it's in a great location and I think the area is definitely underserved. Are there any other, besides the existing ones? Any ones? At one time, is it the Cotton, what's the one on Cotton Lane and Yuma? They had proposed a big car wash there years ago. You haven't heard from those folks? And then, I also noticed is it's, it impressed me that you're going to use, I forget what the percentage is, but reclaimed water and biodegradable. Is that the new thing or?
Well, the reason we're doing that is because we want to make it future-proof. If it ever becomes a requirement in the future, we don't want to have to retrofit it. And I think that we'd like to be industry leaders and be environmentally friendly. If we're going to have a car wash, let's save some water, let's make it friendly to the environment, and make it better than people washing with who knows what chemicals in their own driveways at their homes and make it something that's good for the community.
Yeah, well, I really commend you for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peters?
Do you have other three-minute car washes that you operate?
Not yet.
Okay. I'm just curious how this design worked out with the vacuuming, kind of where the cars queue and then you pull out and I just curious.
Yeah, there's other similar models out there that work well with the timing of getting cars in and out of there. And what really is the big draw for this, for customers, is that you don't have to wait half an hour with crying kids in the car, or you have to get to a meeting, trying to get to work, or you're trying to get home for dinner after work. It's the same or better quality than the full-service car washes, but faster, so.
Anything else for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else from staff?
Mr. Chairman, I could ask a question, please. Based on the testimony that was offered by the applicant, I'm wondering if the hours of operation is something that is proposed and is firm or, and if it is, whether or not it should be included as a stipulation, if that was to overcome. We don't have testimony directly that Comfort Suites would object to it later time, but I just would like to raise that as a question and maybe the applicant can respond to the hours of operation.
What was it, seven in the morning till nine at night?
That was the proposal, yes.
Yeah, Dwayne Hager, 2769 North 149th Avenue in Goodyear, Arizona. I'm a co-applicant. Yeah, our proposed hours, based on when service would be needed, could be between seven in the morning to nine at night. Based on, we're talking to Comfort Suites, we actually, the reason Comfort Suites didn't really have any issues with the project was because we kind of took a proactive step with them, letting them know, we're concerned about noise, we want to make sure that it's not impeding with them. We've actually done, you know, the sound that would come from our car wash should be less than a car driving by. So, they were pleased with that we've, we kept them in mind when we did that. So, on the property currently, having any kind of restrictions before or after didn't really make any sense. It's when we'd be open. Augies is open much later at night and we've had people say that they were at the Walmart parking lot at 10 o'clock at night and they could hear, you know, Augies from Walmart. So, we're not really concerned that, we wouldn't need to stay open any later than nine, but if for some reason there was a haboob that came in, you know, then it might make sense to be open a little bit later or open a little bit earlier. But since there's other businesses that are open early at seven or nine, that's why we, those are our general hours of operation.
Mr. Chairman, I assume it's not fully automated, it's, there's attendance there?
Correct. So, whenever we're not there, it would be closed and locked. We have the opportunity to close off this area so no one can enter. We can also, basically, all the equipment will be taken away so that, we don't want anyone on the property when we're not there. So, it's not fully automated in the sense that we would, we'll always have someone there to run it. Does that make sense?
Does staff have an issue with those hours or what was the reason for the question?
Well, Chairman Slosser, the reason I brought it up was, we experienced quite a bit of discussion with respect to the hours of operation relative to the McDonald's drive-in that was recently proposed to go into Estrella. And so, that prompted me in thinking that, our initial review was that it probably wouldn't generate enough noise to cause a problem because there weren't really any residential uses nearby. However, when the Comfort Suites question came up, that it's a commercial use, but nonetheless involves, you know, people trying to sleep in rooms. And so, it made me, at least want to raise the question as to whether or not it would be appropriate to consider restricting the hours of operation. I'm not saying to restrict them further than what they're proposing, but if we don't put a, if we don't specify the hours of operation, then they could basically run it 24 hours a day if they so choose. And then, if it created a problem, then we'd have to look at going through like a revocation process or something for the use permit, which is complicated.
You don't have a problem with those hours, seven a.m. to nine p.m.?
We don't have a problem with those hours because people don't wash their car in the middle of the night. So, I mean, that's a smart business. That's when businesses are open, so.
We wouldn't necessarily want to be restricted, like I said. If there was, for some reason, that there'd be good to be open at 6:30 or be open at 9:30 at night, we wouldn't see that there'd be a reason to have any additional restrictions. It's, if there was a thousand people traveling through Estrella Parkway at that time of night, then it might be an issue, but people are not going to be traveling. And since the hotel didn't have an issue with any sound, since the traffic that would be coming from our facility wouldn't be any more than cars driving by or parking at their location, if they didn't have an issue with it, we wouldn't see why any additional regulations would be put in there.
And the reason that they don't have an issue with that is because the decibels are so low. What makes the noise in a car wash is the air dryers, the blow dryers. Ours are inside, farther inside the building, and we've mitigated the decibels to where the sound level is lower than the sound of cars driving by on Estrella Parkway.
Vacuums too?
The vacuums too. So, when we showed that data to the Comfort Suites owner, they said, well, okay, we don't have an issue with that, so.
And to answer your question, just so you understand with vacuums, the vacuums are actually, the vacuum system is actually located in a closed area here where my finger's pointing. And so, there's virtually no noise that comes out of any of the vacuum hoses except for the sucking sound of the vacuum itself. So, that's what makes it, it's not like a coin operated where you put the coins in, you hear the large startup motor. That's not this type of facility.
Mr. Chairman and Joe, can you remind me what the decision was on McDonald's as far as 24-hour operation? I don't.
You're testing my memory, which isn't very good these days. I'm sorry. We seem to think it was something on the order of like midnight to four, they would be closed. So, basically, what it did was prohibit overnight operation. In that instance, it was probably more a concern about it being a place for kids to hang out or congregate in the wee hours as opposed to noise generation because even that location was, I don't know, a couple, a thousand to 2,000 feet away from the nearest residence. So, it really wasn't an issue of noise for residents, I think.
To be honest, when I was reading the staff report, that was one of the first things that came to my mind before I read the actual hours that were proposed. And I thought, man, nine o'clock, just like the applicant said, you know, that seems awfully late at night, so I don't know that they need to go later than that.
And Mr. Chairman, to that point, I don't know if I'm comfortable imposing a restriction at all.
Question for staff. Does the zoning ordinance say anything about hours of operation?
Chairman Slosser, Commissioner Barnes, the zoning ordinance does not contain a specific specification for hours of operation. However, it is listed as something that can be considered in connection with issuance of a use permit to ensure compatibility of the use with the surrounding area. So, it's basically dealt with on a case-by-case basis through the use permit. If it were a permitted use, there is generally no restriction on hours of operation on any of those uses.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the commission? All right, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Any further discussion from the commission? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 1330001 as currently stipulated.
I have a motion from Vice Chairman Peters. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Bray. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, the next item on the agenda is in regards to changing the meeting time. And this is near and dear to my heart because about eight o'clock I start fading out, so. I'm sure the staff doesn't have a problem with it, but I'd like feedback from the commission. We've always been seven o'clock, but I think the city council starts at six.
For the regular meeting.
And I know in the past, our previous chairman couldn't make it here by six or 6:30, so that's why we've always been seven. Are there any thoughts from the commission on changing it to say six o'clock as opposed to seven?
I'm fine with six. I'd like to move it up.
The six?
I'm okay with six.
Six is fine.
Perfect. All right. Staff doesn't have an objection to that, do they?
No, we can accommodate just about any time you'd like. We just ask that you consider entertaining a motion to officially change the meeting time.
How about city provided lunch at noon and we'll have the meeting at one o'clock?
We can't do that.
By the way, I did notice the general plan committee gets a light dinner.
That's right.
All right, would someone like to formulate a simple motion to approve the six o'clock change from seven?
Mr. Chairman, I move six o'clock.
Perfect. I have a motion from Vice Chairman Peters. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor of changing the meeting time from seven to six? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, finally. No, it could be, there's nothing on the agenda for the May meeting, but that's when it would first start? Is that correct?
There's nothing scheduled for the May meeting requiring publication, so we can start in May because we don't have any notices that we had to anticipate, so.
Perfect.
So, I expect it.
Can you make sure you double highlight?
Yes.
That it starts at six so no one forgets because I'll show up at seven. All right, perfect. Thank you, guys. The last item is in regards to the Goodyear 2025 General Plan Update and Land Use Plan Presentation. Katie Wilken is back.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman and members of the commission. Those of you who were here might remember in February, we discussed that we were going to propose some changes to our land use plan. For our new members, to fill you in quickly, we are updating our general plan. This is a multi-year process. One of the most used portions of the general plan is the land use plan. And the land use plan is especially important to this body because it's used in making rezoning determinations. When a rezone comes in, staff has to find that it is in conformance with the general plan before we can recommend approval. And even city council has to find that it's in conformance before they can approve a rezone. Currently, this is just a picture of what our current land use map from the 2003 general plan looks like. And again, as you might remember, the discussion that staff brought forth in February was that we had some concerns about how detailed this map was and we were looking at current best practices and some other options. And we're going to propose a new plan and basically, that's what I just passed out to you. We have discussed this with the general plan committee. They've had a chance to review it and vet it somewhat. I've been meeting with our major property owners, developers. The chairman even scheduled a meeting with some planners who work throughout the valley and have been working much longer than I have and have a great, more experience. and have been working much longer than I have and have a great more experience working with land use plans, and they had some great advice for me. So this is by no means final. We definitely want you to look through this chapter and give us what your thoughts are. Come up with any poke holes in it, you know, let, let me know what your possible concerns are. But I did want to tell you a little bit, the part of the reason I didn't give it to you ahead of time is because I wanted to describe some of the items for you before you start looking through it. So this is a copy of what the current proposed map, and the map is at the back if you want to pull that out. And you can see there are much fewer districts on our map than the current map. And the biggest change we're proposing is creating this neighborhood district, which the idea is neighborhoods include a wide variety of housing densities. It includes commercial uses, schools, parks, all those things. They don't necessarily need to be segregated out on a land use map. That is meant to be at a ten thousand foot level. And I do want to, I think as we're looking through this, some of the things I've been hearing from the general plan committee and from developers is just, I want to tell you guys a little bit about the city of some things you might not know or realize until you look at it at a map. So if you look at the slide, so here's the land use plan. But here's the land use plan with all the areas that are currently developed shaded out. So all those areas, obviously areas can redevelop, but currently all those black areas are developed or they're open space, and so they're kind of in their final state. Now I just added some of the areas that are subdivided, so they have a final plat. Basically, someone could pull a permit tomorrow and build a building that they're allowed to on those properties, so they don't need to come back through us for any approvals. And then these lighter areas are areas that have final zoning. So they've come to the planning commission, come to city council, and received what we refer to as entitlement. So they're entitled to build a certain number of dwelling units or a certain amount of commercial or industrial property. And the reason why this is really important to look at is just because you can see how in the north area, it's starting, you're not seeing the land use map anymore so much. And then I just wanted to show, there are a couple areas, mostly south, that have preliminary zoning, preliminary PED zoning. So they do have to do another stage of zoning, but they do have some approvals, and we have some idea of what their plans may be in the future. And so what I see is there's almost kind of two Goodyears going on here. In the north area, we expect to see basically ninety-nine percent of the development that's going to take place over the next ten years to take place north of Pecos Road. And we're considering this as kind of, I almost want to call it Arizona infill. It's not traditional infill. But we're going to see development taking place next to existing development. And that's going to be one of the biggest things we're seeing and dealing with as staff members. Where in the southern portions, I suspect that we're going to continue to see large master plan communities come back. And in those areas that were already zoned, we're going to see people coming back and based on new market ideas, possibly revising and changing plans. And so I think those are the kind of rezonings you guys are going to be seeing in the next ten years is smaller parcels, again, north of the river where somebody's saying, oh, I thought this was going to be commercial, but instead I'd rather it be an apartment complex. And then we're going to see large master plan communities continue. And so I just think that's important to think about because a few of the concerns I've heard about this change in the plan is, one is informing residents what could be built. I mean, that's one benefit to having a really detailed land use plan is it does give you some sense of, I know what could be built on that vacant property near my house. I know what's going to happen. Another question we had was infrastructure planning. That was from one of the planners. You know, how do you do detailed infrastructure planning when you have a map that looks, that's so broad and it could be this or that or that? And then there's a question, too much flexibility, both on the side of, you know, the developer. But I actually even had a developer tell me, you know, does it give staff too much flexibility that staff and council can tell us no, 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 no? When, you know, before it said I could have commercial on my piece of property on the land use map. So, you know, flexibility can work both ways. And what I was kind of looking at here is that the infrastructure planning, because we're going to be seeing current development happening in areas that are more infill. The area north of Pecos Road, we do have a lot of really good infrastructure plans, our integrated water master plan, the engineering design guidelines. We're working on our transportation plan, our parks plan. The planning in this area is very sophisticated and detailed, and we're not so worried about that. While the area south of Pecos Road, again, we expect to see large master plan communities, and they, we require them to give us studies on water planning and their infrastructure. And so I'm not too concerned about infrastructure planning. The other thing is I think we have ways to tell our residents what's going on in their area without necessarily relying on the land use map to do that. So again, most of our residents live north of Pecos Road, so these are the areas they're going to wonder what's going on. And now I just put gray areas over areas that have development plans. If you point to one of those areas, a staff member can tell you what's going on there, that something's built or we have plans in. We can tell you how many units there's going to be, what kind of building is going to be built on that area. And we can create maps and documents that inform our residents. And I think that would be a fantastic idea with this general plan update is to create some of those documents so we can let residents know what's going on in their areas. And then finally, you know, the idea of too much flexibility, that's where we want to look at the policies. So I really want you to read those policies that are in this draft plan. And my thought is really, it's not that the, my, my thought is that the way the land use plan is written, we're probably going to be making similar decisions on zoning, whether we were using the old plan or the new plan where we put apartments or commercial areas would probably be a similar decision. It's just we're going to rely more on the policies than the map to show us what color things are. So I don't think it gives too much flexibility. What it does allow, though, is that you don't have to have that color on a map. So if it's an area that any, you know, if it's the intersection of two arterials, and of course it makes sense to have commercial in that area. They just don't have to go through a general plan amendment to change the color on the map. They could go straight to zoning. And of course, we have our public hearings and our notifications to residents during that public zoning hearing. So that's, that's the hope. So I hope as you read it, you think, is it actually doing what staff hopes it does? So again, I just want to quickly go through what the land use categories are and a couple of the policies that I want to point out on how we're trying to protect our residents. So the open space category is pretty self-explanatory. You'll see in the text, according to state statute, we do have to allow one dwelling unit per acre in any category. So you'll see we allowed that, but that doesn't mean we're going to develop our open space. We just, as I said, that's actually a state requirement that you have to allow some development on any kind of property. We did specifically call out an agriculture, and you'll see it's basically Duncan Family Farms. And this is, it's property that's owned by the state land department, so we still have to vet that through the state land department, and so some of this could change.
Sorry to interrupt you. Can you go back? You know what that picture is, don't you? The one on the left?
A fertilizer?
Some manure spreader, yes. For the record.
Okay, well, maybe I should take that out. And then we created two residential categories. And from our discussions with the general plan committee, I was getting that because we have so many significant natural resources, like the Australia Mountain Park, the Gila River, the Sonoran Desert National Monument, we do want to preserve some areas for more rural-type development. And so we created the scenic neighborhoods category so that we could designate some areas that would remain more rural and characteristic. But it's, it's not just, to me, what, what categorize something as scenic is it's not just low density, but it's built thinking about the environment and the land. And just to give you an example, here's Vanderbilt Farms at Yuma and Saraval Road. It's a gorgeous one-acre lot subdivision, so it's one dwelling unit per acre. And you can see even just by looking at it that it's on a grid system, so it's very suburban-looking. Grass yards for the most part, and you can see beautiful custom homes. But I wouldn't call this scenic because it's basically just a subdivided suburban area. It's just a low-density neighborhood. Whereas here in Australia, this is on Australia Parkway, kind of the northernmost development in Australia. You can see even by looking at the aerial here, you can see the natural desert coming through. When you look at the yards, they don't have lawn, they have natural desert. This is what I would call scenic. So the, the one on the bottom is the scenic neighborhood, the spirit of where the north one is more just a typical neighborhood. And, you know, it's not that one's better or the other, but the Australia is what we're kind of have in our head as we're designating these scenic neighborhoods on the map. And then we do restrict it to one dwelling unit per acre, except in cases where someone can demonstrate there's a reason to have more density. Like maybe there's a different housing product type that if they can cluster it and maybe have higher density, they could preserve some more areas. Or it makes the product type work, like here's some products. I mean, this is a resort, but you can see how it was built to take advantage of views. What we don't want to see in these areas are kind of like this, just a row of housing that doesn't take into account where it is. Just typical suburban development going up a hillside that it doesn't change the type of development depending on where it is. The largest category is the neighborhoods category, and again, the concept is that it can have a wide range of densities and also some commercial uses. Some of the, the one thing I really want to point out to you because this has been a big topic of discussion is that we kind of, within the neighborhoods category, did split residential areas into kind of a low, medium, and high. So single-family or two-family dwelling units that are five dwelling units per acre or less can basically go anywhere in the neighborhoods category. If you're five to twelve dwelling units per acre, we're going to add a little more restrictions. You, you know, maybe need to be near an arterial or some open space or a transit stop or something that kind of justifies a little bit more density. Or maybe it's providing transition between a higher intensity use and single-family. And then when you get over twelve dwelling units per acre, that's going to have the most restrictions. One, we want to see some kind of en, direct entrance onto an arterial roadway, so there's not an apartment complex in the middle of a neighborhood. And two, we, similar to the other category, we want to, you know, see that there's some open space or roadway or, or some kind of feature that it works with or that it's provide, providing a buffer between commercial and single-family or something. And I have some pictures. I just want to, sometimes it's hard to visualize what these densities can be. So just some examples. This is Pueblo Verde at Yuma and Saraval. It's catty corner from the Fry's Marketplace. And so this is two point five nine dwelling units per acre. Here's the plat sixty-five foot wide and sixty-foot wide lots. Pictures, some pictures on the street, typical what we see in the city. Palm Valley Phase One near the golf course off of Litchfield Road. This is three point eight dwelling units per acre. Copy of the plat, and this is what it looks like. And on the street, again, it's, it's kind of similar to the other ones. And then here's some interesting cases of things we see a lot where there's phases that have different densities. So this is also Palm Valley Phase One. Part of it's four point one six dwelling units per acre, part of it's six. But when looking at it, we probably would go ahead and call it under five dwelling units per acre because of how they designed it. And so you can see, though, when you got over five dwelling units per acre, which is the northern part, it's now court homes. It changes the type of home. That's kind of why we chose five dwelling units per acre, because at that point, you're kind of creating a different housing product typically. So those court homes are sixty-five by sixty-five. Just here's some pictures. They're still gorgeous, beautiful homes. Whereas the single-family is about sixty-foot wide lots. Here in Australia, just as an example, there's a whole range of densities around the lakes, but only one little area is over five dwelling units per acre. But, so, so you can see how it, it can have a wide range, and here's an aerial photo, and that's what we like to see. So then here, now this is over five dwelling units per acre, so this is a development where we would want to look at it just a little bit closer. So this is the cottages of Palm Valley, and it conforms because it has the park, you know, having a golf course around it is the kind of thing we'd want to see. You know, you can see how much smaller these lots are than some of the others we just saw. But because of the big open spaces that are around it, it really mitigates that feeling of very tiny lots squished together. But you can see how much shorter these lots are. Rio Paseo, which is just north of the future mall site on Bullard and Virginia. This is a great example of graduated density that we like to see. So you start off with the single-family homes that are about three dwelling units per acre, and then you gradually get more dense, going from court homes to triplexes to multifamily. And then the way they've laid it out is the multifamily is closest to the mall site and the arterial road. And kind of as you move away from the mall is where you get to the single-family. So this is a great example of what we want to see on how the medium uses can provide transition to the higher uses. And that's just an example. So here's a picture of that area. So if we look in here at the court homes, just this is what they look like. They're similar to the ones in Palm Valley. Lots of beautiful landscaping. They're just smaller homes. The triplexes, they're, they're really similar. I couldn't get a street view of it, but they're all similar. It's just that there's three units per each building. And then the apartment complex is typical of a suburban top apartment complex. And this is another multifamily development, the pyramids of Palm Valley. It's right across from the YMCA. And just as a note, we'd actually do this differently if we were looking at it today, and we would have required probably some kind of green space or buffer between the single-family and the condos. And the general plan is actually written that we would require that today. But overall, it's a, you know, good development. It's located on two arterials. It's across from the YMCA. You know, there's all those justifications as why there should be a little bit more density on this corner. And, you know, the buildings have great articulation. Just another thing that, that we did put something in there that there should be some kind of separation between densities that are under five dwelling units. So that's going to be our typical single-family houses and densities over twelve dwelling units per acre, which is going to mostly be multifamily. And it doesn't have to be, you know, a, a really significant separation, but just, you know, a roadway or, you know, a trail or something, just so that they're not right next to each other. And then this is just an example of, this does not meet that regulation I just said. This is on Van Buren and Litchfield, the southeast corner. There's just not significant distance, and the reason we're coming up with this regulation is we have had problems at this development where there's garbage piling up right behind people's homes and it gets a little loud. Where just a little bit of a buffer would have solved the problem. Here's a different apartment complex that would meet it. You can see there's apartments and single-family, but there's a street between, so rather than having them back up to it, the street provides a buffer. And then that one I showed you, Rio Paseo, would work too. Even though they don't have a buffer, they put it next to higher density rather than putting it next to single-family homes. So this would work under our current policies we're suggesting in the general plan. We also specified some areas where we don't think single-family is appropriate. Now, and one of those areas is directly adjacent to an expressway unless there's some kind of buffer. So this would work because they, that's actually a hundred-foot green space they put in between. We have seen proposals where they want to put somebody's back wall next to the freeway property. That wouldn't be allowed. So that's the neighborhoods category. So moving on, the business category is not your neighborhood commercial, but, you know, the mall, regional commercial, Goodyear Center Point, Lowe's, those big boxes, that kind of business. And then in the business category, we'd also allow light industrial uses like warehouses or distribution centers. And just to give you an example, this is Litchfield Road between Van Buren and Yuma. So basically, the whole area to the west is proposed as business on the general plan. But basically because of the residential, we'd like to see maybe that area be more commercial-type uses, and then the area to the west could be more of the industrial uses. And again, we don't show it as commercial on the map, but through the policies, we say that there should be separation between industrial and residential uses. So we're confident that that will happen in the future. And then we do have an industrial, and the biggest difference between the industrial category and the business category is industrial would allow those general heavy I-two type uses. And just, you can see some pictures, like the airport area is one of the big areas. Palm Valley three oh three is another area we designated as that industrial. So just some of those that might create a little bit more noise or odor or dust. And that's all I have on that, so I'd be happy to take any questions you might have right now. But otherwise, if you want to mark up on this piece of paper and you can give it to me at the next meeting, if you want to email me comments, I'd be happy to accept those. Also, if anyone wants to meet with me personally and go over comments or learn more about the general plan update, I'd be happy. the general plan update, I'd be happy to set meetings with everybody, but that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. As always, excellent presentation.
Just to remind the question, do you, do you send out the agendas for these meetings? I assume a couple days like you do on ours. Would you mind doing an email or something to the commission, or just something where we can be notified of what they're discussing that particular Tuesday?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Peters, I apologize that I haven't been doing that.
That's just something I just thought.
Excellent suggestion. Thank you. Yes, I will definitely, we try and get them out a week ahead of time. We don't always have staff reports, it's not quite as formal as this board, but we do at least have on the agenda what the topic is. So just to let you know, May's topic, we're going to be discussing economic development. Our economic development staff, Joe Husband from Goodyear Phoenix Airport, are going to be at the meeting to give us an update on economic development activities.
Can you refresh our memory again on the timing of this whole thing? They don't vote till like twenty fifteen.
Thank you. We hope to have a draft plan done this winter, so in December, and so we'll have the entire draft plan available for comment. We hope to be, you know, and then after we get comment, we'll have to revise the plan. So then we hope that we'll be having public hearings with this group in April, May, two thousand and fourteen. We hope to have council approval in June, two thousand and fourteen, and then it goes to the voters in November, two thousand and fourteen for ratification.
Fourteen, okay.
Yep, fourteen.
All right.
It's due July, two thousand and fifteen, but there's no election in March anymore, so November it is.
Anything else for Katie? All right, thanks again, that was very informative.
Thank you.
All right, last but not least, is there staff communications?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a couple items. I believe at the beginning of the meeting, Bobby passed out the badges that we had made for you, and if she hadn't instructed you, it suggested that when you're at public meetings in, in your capacity as a planning and zoning commission member, that you wear your name tags, respectfully requested. Secondly, I passed out some new books that have the revised zoning ordinance in it, and it's a long story, but I came up one short, so Ryan, I missed you. I apologize. I'll get one to you. It's a long story. But anyway, we're getting you up-to-date information there. And then thirdly, I hope you all had an opportunity to meet Mary Ann, who's our new administrative assistant in community development, our community development, development services. And she'll be attending the meetings and doing the secretarial role, taking minutes, so get a chance to say hi, you can do that. And then lastly, lastly, I wanted to mention that, plant a seed with you perhaps, and get some feedback on whether or not you would be willing to download your agendas if we told you, if we were to send you emails telling you when they're ready and, and just downloading them at, say, at home, or viewing them on the computer at home rather than paper agendas. It's just, I don't need to pressure you into a decision tonight, but unless there's major, or if you're willing to go that route, it's something that we could consider.
Sure, be fine with me.
Mr. Chairman, would there be some, still something at our desk that at least has the, the numbers and, you know, so can kind of follow along, or would we be expected to print that out at home?
Oh, it's, it'd certainly be reasonable to have, have the agendas available for you at the meeting. Paper copies of the agenda would be fine.
And copies out front for the public.
Yes, yes, yes. It just wouldn't have all the support material, so maybe we could give it a try next month and see how you like it, and if it doesn't work, we can always do something different.
Okay.
That would be terrific. Thank you very much.
Good. Is that it?
Yes.
All right. Anything else from the commission? Nothing from staff? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys.